The Quincy School Committee Policy Subcommittee to Order. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda, a proposed revision of the school committee policy, section 2.5.7, School Committee Staff Communications. This was referred to me by Mrs. Hubley about a month ago. She was at a conference and she met with the Brockton school committee member and was presented with a revision that they had. So if you would, I would defer to Mrs. Hubley.
So actually, it was given to me, the copy I have, was given to me by our lawyer, Sarah Spatafor, who drafted it for Brockton School Committee. And it was actually adopted into MASC, so it is on their website as a policy for everyone to look at. But when looking at our policy, we have the, we had a version of the bottom part of it with visiting the schools already in our current policy, but nothing on the communication portion on the top. And I felt it was important that we adopt this into our policy since our lawyer is advising that we have this into our policy. But I would also make the recommendation that we include in on the line where it says, "All official communication policies and directives of staff interest and concerns will be communicated to staff members through the superintendent." I would suggest including the Assistant Superintendent and Director of Student Support Services as well. In the absence of the superintendent, I feel it would be important to have those other two positions there as well. And I'd like to make that amendment.
Mrs. Lebo.
Could we just make it sound like they don't have to do it to all three people? So these, you know, I don't know how to do that. Or to the superintendent, or in his abs, or in the, or in her absence, in their absence.
Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, or Director of Student Support Services.
Okay, but I think, I think they should go through the superintendent if he's there. That's all I'm trying to say.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm fine with you.
Any further discussion?
So how do we do that? How do we do the amendment before the vote? Like, do?
We just do it.
You just say it, and then when we vote on it, we just.
Vote on the amendment first.
So how do you, how do you want to word, how do you want to word that amendment?
I'm asking Laura how I should word it.
Oh, well, you can't.
I can't ask Laura?
So I will say, I would like to make a motion to pass this policy through with the amendment that we include Assistant Superintendent and Director of Student Support Services in under the line with Superintendent. And it would have to be Mr. Guttrow or Mr. Begoli to second it.
I have a question. I'll second it. I had a couple of questions.
Mr. Guttrow.
So, Ed, because the policy before us mentioned superintendent several times. Is it first paragraph, second paragraph, or third paragraph you're referring to?
I was referring to the second paragraph.
Communications.
Under communications, yes.
So the superintendent, comma, Assistant Superintendent, or?
Yes, in the second paragraph was where I was reading from.
Okay, understood. So can I just ask a couple of general questions? So what in Brockton, or wherever, or Sarah, what prompted this?
It's just an efficiency of communication amongst everyone. So that all communication should be directed to the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, or Director of Student Support Services.
Does it mean it precludes us from talking to a principal independently at all? Is that what that means?
Yes, we shouldn't be.
We should never talk to a principal except before this body?
Not if it's in a case of something that should be going to the superintendent.
Right. I mean, but if you're, you know, if you're in the playground, you see the superintendent, you see the principal, and you're talking about something in the school.
We shouldn't, I mean, we shouldn't be directing.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying directing.
That's what this is purpose of.
Mrs. Lebo.
It says official communications, Mr. Guttrow.
Official.
Official communications.
Yes, no, I understand.
Talking in the playground.
So my, yeah, that's unofficial. So, and my last question's in the third paragraph where it says, "Members interested in visiting the school, or the classrooms will inform the superintendent such visits." And then at the end, it says, "Official visits must, will be carried out only under school committee authorization." Does that mean that if any of us choose to go to a school, this body has to authorize it, or just the superintendent?
Superintendent. That's in our current policy.
It says, "Under the authorization." So in other words, it's delegated to the superintendent to be informed and approve it, but, but we don't have to vote on it every time somebody wants to go to a school?
No.
No, we've never done that before. I don't believe we've.
No, I know we haven't. That's why I'm saying it says, "Under school committee authorization." That language made me.
So it's also official, it's also official visits. That's same status with official visits. It's not like I'm going to the bake sale, or I'm going to speak to a classroom. It's an official, when it's an official thing, that you're going in for a reason, that you have to get authorization from us, because you represent us. But if you're just going in, you should tell the superintendent and let him know and let the principal know.
Understood. Yep. So I'll second the motion on the amendment. Do we have to take it?
Any further discussion? Mr. Santoro.
On the motion, I think this is good because it prevents individual members from trying to conduct business beyond the approval of the school committee in general. That's probably why the provision is there. That's all. Thank you.
Well, that makes sense. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion to approve?
So do we have to vote?
Mrs. Hubley?
Do we have to vote on the amendment first and then as amended?
No, we just voted it all together. I've made a motion, you seconded it. Now we need, just need all in favor to move it to the main meeting.
All those in favor. Aye. Opposed? As have it. We'll go on to the agenda for the next meeting, which is today.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Quincy School Committee for December 13th to order. Would you please stand for the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing and giving your thoughts and prayers to the safety and well-being of our students and staff, especially our alumni, who may be serving to protect us in this most troubled world. Oh, I'm sorry, Superintendent.
Thank you. We also have memoriams tonight. If you could keep in your thoughts and prayers these individuals and their families. Marie White, she was most recently a school bus driver for us. She worked for the Quincy Public Schools for the past five years. Eugene Maycumber, 30-year veteran of the Quincy Public Schools. He started as a physical education teacher and football coach at Quincy High School, then moved to be a dean and later assistant principal at North Quincy High School. Jane Potenza, a teacher at the Snug Harbor Community School and Marymount Elementary Schools for 15 years. Gerald Jerry Ridge, 35 years with the Quincy Public Schools. Was first a special education teacher at Broad Meadows Middle School and Quincy High School, and then was a guidance counselor at North Quincy High School. And lastly, Joan Youngman, retired after 36 years as a teacher at the Willard School, Massachusetts Fields School, Marymount Elementary School, and Parker Elementary Schools. If you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Please call the roll.
Mr. Begoli.
Present.
Mrs. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. Guttrow.
Present.
Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mr. Santoro.
Present.
Mayor Koch.
Present.
Quincy High School Student Representative Molly Smith Gaeta.
Present.
And North Quincy High School Student Representative Amy Tan.
Present.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Mrs. Owens, would you please do me a favor and read the recording statement?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 15th. Motion to Mr. Begoli, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. All those in favor? Opposed? Also, executive session minutes for November 15th. On a motion to Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Pursuant to the guidelines of open forum, is there anybody who wishes to speak at open forum? Seeing none, we'll move. Do we have anybody who?
No letters, no.
Okay. We'll move to the superintendent's report. Superintendent.
Thank you, and good evening again, everyone. I will start first with the Christmas poster contest winners. Congratulations to the winners of the annual Quincy Sun Christmas Poster Contest. The winning students were invited to ride on a float in the recent Quincy Christmas Parade, and their posters are displayed in the windows of the Quincy Sun offices on Hancock Street for grades one through three. Chastity Ty from Lincoln Hancock Community School, she's in, she's a third grader, and she won first place. Congratulations, Chastity. Anvi Goial, a Walston, grade two, won second place. Congratulations, Anvi. And Vihan Badri Naranyan from Clifford Marshall School, grade three, was the third-place prize. So congratulations, Vihan. For grades four through five, Elliot Martinez from the Lincoln Hancock Community School, grade four, was awarded the first-place prize. Congratulations, Elliot. Bella Lou from Squanum Elementary School in grade five won the second-place prize. Congratulations, Bella. And Savannah Nguyen from Snug Harbor Community School, grade five, was an honorable mention. So congratulations, Bella, and to all of these students. And thank you to the Quincy Sun for putting on again another year of the Christmas poster contest. Next is congratulations to the 198 graduating seniors in the class of 2024, who have been awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarships for scoring in the top 25% district-wide on the MCAS assessments. The scholarship covers eight semesters of tuition at any University of Massachusetts State University or community college campus. So congratulations to those students. We're very proud of you. Next is season 15 of the WGBH High School Quiz Show is underway. And North Quincy High School once again has already made it through the qualifying round. They will face Lexington High School on March 23rd at 6:30 PM. Best of luck to the team as they prepare hopefully for another win this year. And of course, I'll keep you updated on their progress. Next is the Music Department Fall Wrap-Up. There's a lot of information under this category. For our band program at the elementary level, there were 332 total new rentals for the Beginning Band and Strings Program, which is amazing. Our after-school strings program began in October with a record 230 students participating in 22 beginner classes and 13 continuing classes throughout the city. In addition, we have 80 beginning orchestra students in two orchestras, and 32 students in our more advanced John Adams Orchestra, who some of you, um, saw at the most recent tis the season. They did a fantastic job. And of course, thank you to the staff and students in our QPS Music Department who do an amazing job. Our marching band and color guide had a very exciting season. Highlights included Civil Medal at the Quincy MICA Finals. MICA stands for the Massachusetts Instrumental Choral and Conductors Association. And a historic second-place finish at the New England Band Association Final Championships. They also got in a third consecutive title in the Quincy Christmas Parade, so congratulations. In addition, 39 students auditioned for the Massachusetts Music Educators Association Eastern Senior District Festival. Of these nine students from the choir and band were accepted into the festival with, for receiving all state recommendations. So congratulations to those students. Next is the Quincy Public Schools Middle School Robotics. The first LEGO League qualifying event was held this past Saturday, December 9th, with each of our middle schools sending teams, and over 70 QPS students competed at the event. Both of the Point Webster teams advanced to the state championship, which is amazing, and that's being held this Saturday. And of course, we are very proud of the Point Webster Technology Engineering Team and their teacher, Lisa Chin, who also received the Coach Mentor Award for the event. So that is pretty amazing accomplishment. So again, congratulations and best of luck for this Saturday. Lastly, the winter concert schedule was shared with school committee, and their packets and calendar invitations have been sent out for all of the dates. The schedule has been shared on the Quincy Public Schools website and social media, and videos will be available on the Quincy Public Schools YouTube channel for those who are not able to attend in person. So with that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, moving on to new business. Item A, Equity Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging Program Improvement Plan. Ms. Conley to present.
As you know, my name is Kim Conley, Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging for Quincy Public Schools, here in my almost second year, or year and a half, with the district. And I want to thank you, Mayor Koch, Superintendent Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Erin Perkins, all members of the SCUPLE Committee, and the senior leadership team for all the support and the opportunity to engage in efforts to build a welcoming community for all students and staff. I continue to be excited and honored to be a part of the Quincy Public Schools, where I have had the fortune to work with talented staff and students who continuously strive for excellence. I'd like to begin with a reflection on the past year's four goals. The first goal, to increase diversity in the workforce, was to identify and establish a minimum of three structures, tools, or partnerships to help build a pipeline system of educators to increase the district's workforce diversity. Overall, we have been successful in creating awareness of QPS endeavors to connect with educators of diverse backgrounds, provide opportunities for professional growth, and broaden our reach to diverse candidates. If you look at pages 15 and 16, you will see that we have steadily increased our hiring of educators and paraprofessionals over the last, past few years. From 2021 to 2023, we grew from six to 11 to 16 educators of color, and from seven to nine to 16 paraprofessionals of diverse backgrounds. The total number of staff of diverse backgrounds hired went from last year, 47, to this year, this past year, 56. Specifically, we have expanded our outreach to colleges and universities through monthly communications with over 200 professors and all of the ed prep providers as identified by DZ. As mentioned on page five and six, this led to a collaboration with UMass Boston on Project Beacon, which is an initiative to increase mental health providers of diverse backgrounds in schools, such as guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, and psychologists. Over five years, this $5 million initiative will provide low-cost tuition for master's degrees, as well as paid internships for 50 candidates of diverse backgrounds. I'd especially like to thank Mara Papil, Senior Director of Senior Student Supports, for her collaboration and leadership in providing coordination of supervisors through staff for five mental health provider interns in QPS. We believe this is a great opportunity to provide pathways for our existing employees, allowing us to retain talented and diverse staff, as well as allowing us to attract new talented and diverse staff. Excuse me. In collaboration with other districts, we have also developed online information systems to provide degree pathways for staff. For staff still needing a bachelor's degree, we arranged an info session to give them access to a highly affordable and online associates and bachelor's program. We also hosted a master's program info session of nine colleges and universities, which had 65 participants join, and several had low-cost programs, especially for aspiring educators of diverse backgrounds. We've been able to expand our presence in the community of districts who are working together towards increasing teacher diversity. We have become actively participating members of the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, as well as the Association of Massachusetts School Equity Leaders. Those groups both meet monthly to share and discuss problems of practice, best practices, share resources, and to plan events such as diversity hiring fairs. We also attended the Metco Directors Annual Conference, which is a great resource for speakers who we might invite to our own professional development sessions. Finally, we were able to apply for and receive DZ's Teacher Diversification Grant in the amount of $46,000. This allowed us to pay tuition for two employees and two QPS alumni, provide MTEL prep coaching for nine students and six staff or alumni, provide MTEL vouchers for 20 staff or alumni, and to run a student-led focus group to help us understand how we can encourage students to become teachers. As a grant recipient, we were also invited to be part of DZ's Teacher Diversification Professional Learning Collaboration to discuss best practices in diversity recruitment. Reflecting on Goal Two, around closing the opportunity gap, or providing supports or programs to support the most underserved students, we were able to bring in the He Is Me, I Am King Boys Mentoring Program to two schools, North Quincy High School and Broad Meadows. This program connects Black and Brown boys to a mentor that reflects their background while providing a cell curriculum. We learned that the program did not do as well in high school with the many competing activities and sports. However, it was highly effective in building relationships at Broad Meadows. One of the goals is to, of the program, is to expose students to an aspiring educator of a diverse background, so they might also think about becoming an educator one day. In partnership with Keith Sagala, we were able to offer the High School Senior Education Internship Program to employ 39 high school students to work as interns in our elementary and middle schools. Our cohort was about, comprised of about 44 students of diverse backgrounds. In our focus groups, we learned that many of the younger students were not aware of the opportunity. So there is actually an even greater opportunity to increase diversity in this project and strategically build, try to build interest in working with youth. Goal Three is to support creating a safe and supportive environment by developing or collaborating on professional development, or creating and supporting DEI networks to advance DEI work in schools. In collaboration with Senior Director of Student Supports, Mara Papil, and Senior Director Matty Roy, in curriculum, we were able to offer various professional development opportunities, including coaching for Positive Alliance for the Athletic Coaches, Suffolk University's Restorative Practices, and Adaptive X's Racial Equity Action Leadership Program for school leaders. We're also able to increase knowledge around culturally responsive teaching practices and issues that may disproportionately impact students of diverse backgrounds through DEI newsletters to staff. A sample of a newsletter can be found in the appendix, Appendix D, on page 21. Finally, we developed an employee resource group for African-American, Latinx, Asian, and Native American staff called ALANA, to meet quarterly to build community and connections. There was also a quarterly newsletter, and a sample of that is on page 23. Goal Four of identifying and contributing to refining systems, policies, or approaches to increase our ability to attract, hire, and retain diverse educators, and create tools to support staff, was met through expanding our reach of job postings on platforms such as Handshake, LinkedIn, Mass Hire, and Massachusetts Partner for Diversity in Education. We were also able to assist hiring committees with interview questions to inquire about candidates' cultural competency. Finally, a DEI resource link was created on Aspen to provide quick links and opportunities to increase learning or access to opportunities for students for professional development. Looking forward to this year, all of the goals will be continuous, and growth in each area is what we will strive for. The goals for this year are as follows. Goal One, to increase workforce diversity, we endeavor to increase attendance to events by 50%, and to increase grant funding for teacher diversification efforts by 50%. In addition to being a participating member in various associations we are a part of, we will also look to take on leadership roles. We will look to increase the number of staff to, supported by tuition or MTEL prep support over last year. Goal Two, we'll be looking to increase participation of students in programs we have identified, such as He Is Me, Generation Teach, Mass Robotics, and others. Additionally, we will be moving from an approach to developing principals' knowledge of culturally responsive teaching through Adaptive X, to providing consultation to high-need schools to support their unique issues, such as attendance or alternatives to discipline. We would like to expand training for the high school education internship to younger grades, so that they can be prepared for the internship when they become juniors and seniors. Goal Three, for creating a safe and supportive environment, we will look to explicitly build more PD for staff around culturally responsive teaching in the new teachers' PD, as well as the all-day PD in November. Working closely with Director of Curriculum, Mike Morani, we will identify partners who can be successful in working with the district strategically to implement culturally responsive teaching professional development through a long-term plan. ALANA meetings for staff of diverse backgrounds will be held monthly instead of quarterly. We will also increase the frequency of DEI newsletters from bimonthly to monthly, and ALANA updates from quarterly to monthly. Finally, for Goal Four of refining internal systems and policies, we will develop an expanded network to recruit practicum students, as well as an improved tracking system for the purposes of recruitment. In addition to the DEI page on Aspen, we will look to share resources on a DEI webpage to be able to expand resources to families. We will look to expand opportunities to families using the new platform, the small newsletter platform, through family DEI newsletters. As far as investment requests or needs of, or areas of need, it would be helpful to be able to have an applicant tracking system, which would help facilitate the ease in which applicants could apply for positions, as well as allow us to have data to use for recruitment purposes. Additionally, now that we have begun to move back to in-person parent events, such as workshops, it would be helpful to have simultaneous interpretation equipment, which allows participants for whom English is not their primary language, to use a special set of headphones to listen to the feed of an interpreter. This has the advantage of interpreting, of not interpreting the flow of speech. That concludes my presentation. Thank you again for allowing this opportunity for me to share my plan. And at this time, I'd like to welcome any questions, suggestions, feedback you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Guttrow.
Kim, thank you. And you're doing a great job. Congratulations, first of all, on the diversity hiring. I've been on the school committee six years, and it's just nice to see those numbers escalate in the way that they have over the last couple of years. You mentioned several vehicles that have led you to get a crop of candidates that are competent to do that. Can you speak to which of those are probably the most effective, which have really brought the most qualified candidates before you?
I would say it's kind of a chain of events. I think the outreach to the different colleges, just like staying on their radar to connect them to our open posts, and then while being in communication with those colleges, we've been invited to many of their events and have been able to meet their candidates. So we attend a lot of fairs or diversity fairs, things like that. So that's mainly been, I think, the source of kind of the newer candidates. But I think the district probably would be better served thinking more about the pipeline rather than, you know, digging up candidates that are not really going into the ed prep programs as, as much as they were in the past.
What do the, what do the colleges say about the pipeline? About the students going into the degree programs that we're looking for?
Yeah, not, not good. They've, they've been struggling. So that's also something that we'd like to work on, is, you know, we have a very diverse population. that we'd like to work on is, you know, we have a very diverse population, a student population here in Quincy. Some of the other districts do as well. So, you know, my hope is to work with the other districts to try to find ways to get our students more excited about being teachers. Yeah.
And there's going to be fierce competition out there, right?
I would say so.
So kudos all the more to you for attracting the candidates that you are. Second question was, in your DEI newsletter, it talked about a QHS student survey that you participated in or advised on. Can, can you tell us a little bit about what that survey said?
Do you mean the, the focus group? Let me see which one?
It said on the back, it says Quincy High School's Culture and Climate Team invited you to join them. The team developed and administered a survey.
Keith Ford, the principal over at QHS, had just invited me to their, their Culture and Climate meeting. And so they were actually doing a survey. So it was really more a school survey.
Was the survey around DEI issues?
I think it was around a variety of issues, and DEI topics were on there.
Yeah, be curious as to what they said. I mean, one of the things that we, we had all the school improvement plans, and we look at the vocal surveys, and all the principals look at it. So be curious to see what, what students, you know, said, how they weighed in on DEI issues. And then a final question is, when, when we talk to the principals, you know, one of the things in the vocal surveys was how students see themselves in the reading or the curriculum. And I just wondered if you could explain a little bit about how you support the principals in that endeavor.
Right. I have created a DEI resources document, and there are several book lists there. I'm not sure if everyone has gotten a chance to, like, drill down through them. There, there are quite a lot of resources there. But, you know, that is one place that they can look if they're looking for particular books by, you know, demographic.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Talk into the microphone.
In regards to the survey for Quincy High students, I can say that this email, it wasn't directly DEI-based. It was a lot of general Quincy High as a whole questions. There were DEI questions on there, but I would not say that this is a main focus of it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. I just have one question, three parts. So when you talk about the ALANA meetings, when do they take place? How is coverage met for the teachers being at those meetings? And do they want them more often than quarterly instead of what they were, I mean, monthly instead of quarterly?
They take place once a month, usually towards the end of the month, either on a Tuesday or Thursday, and usually at 3:00. So it's after school. So.
Okay. And they want them more often?
I think there's a range of, like, a lot of people have either coaching or things like that. So it can be tough to get a lot of participation. I think the more, not everyone can get to every single meeting. So that's why I decided to have more meetings. It's just so that people have more opportunities to try to get to them. Is that, is your question?
Okay, all right. Thank you. And through to Superintendent, can we get a copy of the survey results? Is that something we can?
Yeah, we'll get you those.
That'd be great to see those. Thank you.
No problem.
Mrs. Cahill.
It's a lot, right? It's like a lot of people fishing in the small pond trying to get the same fish. Do, when you have your meetings with the, with the colleges, you know, now we have like the Early College and all these other opportunities for students to get credits, you know, for once they graduate. But is there any talk with some of the colleges to try to create, like you said, a pipeline into their schools to get students like start here, get some background, some classes that they can take here that can be kind of transferred into an education tract with their schools? Like, is there, is there any kind of communication like that with some of the colleges?
Yeah, I believe that with Quincy College, we have a partnership with them that is only for early ed though. So Keith and I have been talking to other partners to see if we can get something in elementary or secondary education as well. The other thing that's available out there is, you know, transferring from, transferring credits from an associate's program to a bachelor's program. And then some schools offer a plus one, which is like just one more year and you get a master's degree. So I think just making people aware of those programs, you know, could help. There's just so many kind of moving parts and different ways you can go to school. So, you know, it can be difficult.
It's hard. But I think, you know, when you point to the early, early ed program with Quincy High, I think that's, that's a great program, right? It really gives the kids the, the experience, and then it gets them moving in that direction. And if we want to look at the other, you know, maybe being creative with like a Bridgewater or someplace that, you know, UMass, wherever has a solid education program, try to find ways that we can kind of get the kids engaged, even if it's a summer program or something that can get them engaged so that they start now getting into that, you know, track, and then they can fill it out. You know, they might be 100%, yeah, this is what I want to do, and then follow through. But having a partnership at that level, you know, I don't know. I'm, I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job, but it's just something that I, because I do point to the partnership that we have at Quincy College, and I think that it's effective, and it might be an effective way to get people engaged in, in the elementary and high school level. And my only other question that I was looking at with the MTLs, and I don't know if I'm correct here, but don't you have to, to take the MTLs, like, you have to have a degree in a certain area to be able to take MTLs to be, like, do you need a bachelor's or a, you know, to be able to take MTLs? Or anyone can take them? And then what? And then you're, and then you're certified or whatever to teach? No. So, yeah, I don't, is it like backwards? Doing the MTLs first before we have a degree or something to be able to teach?
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to teach, but upon, you know, receiving their degree, then they would have passed that part of, you know, the requirements. And so.
The MTLs?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they can do it backwards. And I think we're working with an MTL prep coach, and she has actually said that she feels like high school students will be more successful than some of the kind of paraprofessionals she's been working on, just because some of the paraprofessionals, you know, may have had some gaps in their education.
Yeah.
And so, like, where our high school students are so used to testing, it's, it's, you know, not as difficult for them.
And that makes sense. But so, so they would take the MTLs and then pursue a degree?
Right.
Okay. And then once they pursue a degree, if they pass the MTLs, then they're all set. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So a lot of, a lot of education programs, they require that you take the MTL before you can do like your student teaching. So before you can actually go into the real, like, the education piece to get your license, they do require that you have passed at least like the Communication and Literacy, the Foundations of Reading, the, maybe the general curriculum, whatever. It depends on the area that you're going into. So that can hold up a lot of kids is, you know, if you haven't passed, they won't let you student teach typically. And so you will graduate maybe with a, you know, hopefully with a bachelor's, but you may have to wait until you've passed the test in order to get your license.
Well, it makes sense to me that you would be taking them prior to student teaching because you already have some background core classes, right? But to do it before you are in college, you know, I didn't know you could do that, but that's, that's okay. So that clarifies that.
Yeah, I think you could do it once you finish high school if you wanted to. And like Kim said, it's probably for some kids, that might be a really good idea because it's fresh, you know. But I think, you know, the MTLs can be tricky for, for a lot of, a lot of people.
I'm not taking them. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. So just on that, Mrs. Cahill, I actually took the MTL and wish I had taken it when I got out of high school because a lot of the content was what you did in 12th grade English. And even though I had a master's degree when I took it, it would have been easier to do it then. The other thing is now schools, not only do they require it, but they don't actually admit you to the School of Education until you've taken it because they are graded on how many of their students get licenses. Just like nursing schools won't let you go into nursing school until you take the NCLEX because they want to make sure when you're done, you're going to be able to pass that exam. So there's, that's the colleges are making themselves, they're graded on it. So I had a question for you, though. On page six, you mentioned the MTL alternative. What is the MTL alternative?
So I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but DZ had launched a pilot where they offered different alternatives to the MTL. So if you were having trouble passing it, they had a series of other tests that you could take instead.
They still doing that?
Yes.
And I have one quick question. What does BCNC stand for?
Boston Chinatown Network.
Neighborhood Center, okay.
Neighborhood Center.
On page 13, you say that one of the action steps is to have stay interviews for diverse employees. What is a stay interview?
So there's this theory in, I don't know if you call it human resources, but just that some employees haven't been asked to stay, like, so, you know, just encouraged, like, we, we would like you to stay here. So basically, it's just a check-in with an employee just to hear how things are going, if you, you know, we can connect them to any resources, or if they need any kind of professional development in any areas. You know, if there's time, you might just kind of talk about like what your career path might look like. Just so there's a sense that, you know, that, that relationship is growing and not just like someone not caring about, you know, how you're doing.
And do you do those stay interviews?
So I offered them. I think only a couple of people took me up on it, but I did offer it, yeah.
That's great. That really is great. And on page, oh, the numbers, I think, are incredible. I think the fact that we have increased that much in a year is really, really incredible. I think it's wonderful to see. And my last question, it wasn't a question. That Beacon Fellowship is amazing.
Yeah, we're excited.
It is amazing. Do we actually, so we, do we have people now participating in that or something we're moving towards?
So they went ahead and recruited for the first cohort. So we didn't get to choose anyone that was a part of that. But we do have, I believe, five of their students being supervised by our staff. So, you know, that's potentially five people that could come into our system at some point. And I think one spoke Spanish, one is able to do sign language, and, you know, so it's, it's a diverse mix. And really, I have to give a lot of credit to Mara. She's really, you know, leading that whole effort. So we're excited.
It really is tremendous. So I think it's a great report. Thank you very much for putting it together. It is a lot. You're doing a lot.
Yeah.
One little person.
If you think of anyone, the application for that is January 15. So they need to apply to UMass Boston's program first, and then they can apply to the fellowship. And, you know, that can be open to anyone to, to become part of that program. So it's something we're actively recruiting for.
And I think I read, I can't find it though, somewhere that you have a relationship with Curry too.
So, yeah, Curry applied for a grant, and it, I think it went away this year. But basically, they applied for a grant to try to do some teacher pipeline work, and they had a vacation program. So I think one or two of our students went and stayed during one of their vacations and took, you know, MTL prep support classes and got to eat in the cafeteria and do, you know, student activities and things like that to get their college experience. So, yeah.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Mr. Catrow.
One more question I thought about. Kim, a couple, a couple of years ago, both nationally and here in Quincy, there, there were reported incidences of, you know, harassment, discrimination, or bullying. You know, we, we had the anti-Asian hate rally here. There were incidences across. Do you work with principals, or is there kind of a coordinated system whereby we track reports or incidences around bullying, harassment based on race or gender? And, and do you look at that holistically in any way? And we haven't done a deep dive on the incident reports in any of the schools, but I, I just don't know where those are. I know, you know, I, I looked at the vocal surveys about students self-reporting. Do you feel as if there has been that? And I, I can't remember what the trends in, in student reporting through the vocal surveys were around that. But I, I didn't know if there were actual incident reports, and if you look at them and how you coordinate with principals around those.
That's a great question. I'm not sure if Aspen has the ability to kind of track it by, you know, what type of incident it does. Okay, so I'm not, but we haven't really looked at it comprehensively, right?
They do, the principals do, they use Aspen to track. We also have like handwritten incident reports, but all of that stuff is, is tracked through Aspen. They input it, and Dan Pacho is the one that disaggregates it all.
It would just be interesting on a district-wide basis to correlate all, all that data to see based on either race or gender or whatever the, the topic is, just to see if there are any trends, especially if we want to celebrate reductions in reports or harassment or bullying around that. That would be useful to know next year.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Thank you.
Just, just one more thing you had asked me last year about enrollment into ed prep programs. And so statewide, it's gone down 6% in the last year. There was a little bump in 2021 and 22. I think that was when the emergency license was available. But since then, there's been a good drop off.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. You're a great addition to our school system. Thank you. Motion. Oh, we have one more comment. Go ahead.
It works. Sorry. When you were talking about reporting incidents in the data, is there anything to encourage people to report? Because for me personally, and I think maybe I'm in a position of privilege, but I would, I don't know what I would do if I experienced one of these incidents. Like, what would I do after? Is there something to empower people who are sort of not sure? Or even if they're bystanders who experience like an incident, where do they report it? Do they like tell their guidance counselor? Or do they like, what? Is there a way to report it digitally, like a specific place? Because I know some people wouldn't want to like go through like their time and effort to report something to, and wait for someone to talk to them. So maybe like just empowering students to feel that they can, they have a voice in this, yeah.
Do you mean like kind of launching like an awareness campaign, something like that? Or do you mean like an actual like system or process to be able to report things?
I think a system, like an online system, that's just like in a place that's easily accessible. So if you, even if it costs, like, an awareness, maybe the system exists. I don't think it does. But like something online or easy to do, and then awareness that, hey, you can use this. So both kind of?
We do, we do have, on the website, we have like, it's for bullying, but we do have an anonymous form that you can fill out. If, you know, if you're not comfortable going to like a teacher or a school staff, there's a whole like page on, on the QPS website. But, you know, I definitely hear what you're saying, Amy, and I think we need to just make sure that we're really communicating with our students so that they know that that's available.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thanks. Motion to accept by Mr. Catrow, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. All those in favor? Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Item B, Superintendent, under new business.
Thank you. Before you is a request to approve the Teacher Diversification Pilot Program grant of $92,738.
A motion of Mr. Catrow, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. We approve. Do we need a vote?
Mr. Begoli, Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Catrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayako?
Yes.
Item C, Superintendent.
Thank you. Item C is thanks to the QPS. Uh, thank you. Item C is thanks to the, uh, QPS parent Nicole O'Haire. A communication board valued at $1,500 has been donated for the Snug Harbor School Playground. If we could have a motion to approve the donation.
On a motion, Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mr. Begoli, Superintendent.
Uh, Mr. Begoli.
We have two items, uh, in the first.
Do we need a vote?
Say yes, Paul.
Yes.
Roll call. Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a number of items for, um, subcommittees. The first grouping is from Mrs. Cahill. Do you have any comment on those?
No, just, um, these are updates to these, this policy recommended by the Coordinator of Health Services to be looked at.
Okay. So unless there's an objection, we will move them into Subcommittee.
Yes, sir.
Item E and F are referrals by Mr. Begoli. Unless there's objection, we'll refer it to them into Subcommittee's. All those agreed? Okay. So move. Superintendent, item G.
Uh, we have student travel, uh, in state overnight, uh, Quincy High School Student Council to the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils Conference in Hyannis, Hyannis, Massachusetts.
On a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. Cahill, we approve.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay. Mayakoke, item H.
There are four items here that, um, Let's talk whether we needed to go into executive session for or not. As we all know, we're very at the tail end of negotiations with all of the unions. We've discussed these items in executive session a number of times. So just as soon, uh, begin moving them. Unless anybody has any questions. We do have a copy of the, uh, SEIU Local 8880 if anyone wants to see it, um, before the vote, or we have them here, distribute afterwards. But certainly I'd make a motion on item H, the Memorandum of Green Beach in the Quincy School Committee Teams, this Local 122, Quincy Public Schools Security Force Association.
On a motion, Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes. So item I is, um, same union, but it's for the bus attendants.
On a motion of Mr. Castro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Item J.
This is the educator evaluation. Rubrics was, was also discussed. And by the way, I should, on behalf of the committee, thank Alison Cox for all the good work on all of these items. Uh, but I would, uh, suggest passage of this as well.
On a motion, Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Item K.
This is the, uh, one with the food services. As you all know, we did the one year. And now this is the follow-up to that, uh, with the market adjustment. Uh, I would, uh, again suggest we, we move this tonight.
On a motion, Mr. Begoli, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, Superintendent.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox.
Seeing no additional business, communications. We have our upcoming meetings.
Additional business?
Thank you. Um, I do want to just recognize, uh, Mr. Santoro tonight, uh, under additional business. Tonight, we once again thank Vice Chair, Mr. Frank Santoro, for his service to the Quincy Public Schools and the Quincy community. A graduate of North Quincy High School, Mr. Santoro spent over 40 years as an educational professional, beginning his career in Boston Public Schools and then moving to the Brookline Public Schools. During his years teaching outside of Quincy, Mr. Santoro was always involved in the Quincy community, serving two terms on the Quincy School Committee during challenging times from 1986 to 1993, and also served on the park board and the Quincy College Board as well. Frank joined Quincy Public Schools first as principal of the Central Middle School, later at Quincy High School, where his vision for the design of the new building is one enduring example of his legacy. In his retirement years, if you can call them retirement years, uh, Frank has continued to contribute to Quincy through his work with the Quincy Art Association and the Q Arts Gallery, the Quincy College Board of Governors and the Quincy Asian Resources Board. And you've been a great bridge between, uh, the Quincy Public Schools and Quincy Asian Resources for us. Uh, we have been fortunate to have Frank back on school committee for these past four years. His experience and guidance so valuable during the simultaneous leadership transition and COVID-19 pandemic in 2020 and 2021, uh, very difficult years. His leadership and experience in the development of the De Cristofaro Learning Center and the Squandom Elementary School buildings will definitely be seen in the student, staff and community folks' designs of these beautiful and state-of-the-art facilities. And I have to thank you personally, Frank, particularly for the Squandom work that we've been doing over the last several months. Uh, in addition to being the vice chair, the last two years Frank has served on the facilities, transportation and security, teaching and learning, and equity, diversity, inclusion, subcommittees, and meaningfully participated in nearly 200 regular and Subcommittee meetings, which is incredible. Uh, as a small token of our appreciation for your service to the city of Quincy and the Quincy Public Schools, on behalf of myself, Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Perkins, and the Superintendent's Leadership Team, as well as this body, the Quincy School Committee, please accept this chair as a tribute to your incredible record of service. And from all of us, thank you, Frank.
If I can add to, uh, those comments, uh, Superintendent covered it fairly well. I've known Frank for a long time. Remember when you were on the park board when I was the park commissioner? Um, and the last, um, the last few years with the, with the pandemic, I think really, um, shows the kind of person you are. You, you never, uh, get overexcited. Uh, you were never disagreeable, always thoughtful, only spoke when you really had something to say and add to the discussion. And of course, all those years of experience that Kevin talked about were meaningful, uh, in those discussions. And, uh, I can say that the Quincy Public Schools are far better because of your commitment, your contributions, and loyalty to the city over the years. So appreciate your service and your friendship.
Thank you, man.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Thank you to both and all of you. It's been an honor to serve and have at least small pot. And what a great school system we have. I also have no doubt that Mrs. Bertios will be a good addition to this team as you go forward in its greatness. So thank you. Thank you very much. I guess, um, other than, oh, yes, go ahead, dear.
I have a question about the memorand, the, um, the agreements between the school committee. We can see those, right? Can the public see them or just us? Like the ones, the paper you had for HI and K.
Agenda.
Okay. Yeah, it's, you're talking about? The memorandum agreement?
Yeah.
So they will be incorporated into a contract, which will then be publicly available to the public. So the, the public can see those changes.
And then my second question was, um, it's not an attack on anyone, like, um, but why aren't the executive sessions public? Like I know they're executive for a reason, but I'm kind of curious.
So by statute, uh, very good question, by the way, but by statute, there are sensitive, uh, topics that the school committee must discuss from time to time that requires confidentiality. Uh, and that ranges from personnel matters to contract negotiations. And by statute, these very narrow categories are listed. Uh, and only these very narrow categories can we use executive session for that purpose. Otherwise, uh, the meetings are held in public. So it's just for those narrow, um, pieces of discussions, including personnel matters as well as contract negotiations and some other small things.
Do, do we ever get to see the meetings? Like you know how these get like out after a while?
Executive session minutes are typically, uh, held confidentially.
Okay.
For the, because those topics are very confidential.
Okay.
And it's not something that by statute, the public would be privy to.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
Mr. Castro.
I just want to know if, if we as members could take the opportunity to say a few kind words about you, Mr. Santoro.
That's very nice of you.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, as a former award counselor, I know, I, I knew you Frank, when you were very active in, in the Beach of Noel community. I, your service in Quincy Public Schools is incredible. You know, I, I and my family will forever be touched by the award that you gave my son, Brian, the Frank Santoro Award. He, he, you know, I told him tonight was your last meeting and he said, I love that guy. That was his, his quote back. Um, so you have, you've really left an indelible legacy in, in QPS that is very meaningful to my family, to this community, and to this body. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We need to get out of here. You don't need to do this. Mr. Begoli.
I love this guy, Joe. Uh, he's been an incredible asset to our, uh, community, to the school committee. Uh, as a principal of Quincy High School, he, he spent more time with, um, at events than he did with his wife. Um, I mean, your, your dedication to this system, to this community is unmatched. And we're going to miss you terribly for your professionalism, uh, your knowledge, uh, and everything you've brought to this committee and to the community. So.
Thank you, Paul.
Frank, you're a good friend and I do love you.
Thank you. You'll see me for the Lunar New Year vote. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Oh, go ahead, Kathy. Oh, gee.
Truly will be, Miss, your great friend and a great colleague. And being only 5'3", I can say literally and figuratively, you're somebody I look up to.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Item, where are we? Item B. Thank you. Letter from Mrs. Ryan.
Dear members of the Quincy Public School Committee, thank you so much for honoring my brother, Richard, with the dedication of the Performing Arts Wing at North Quincy High School in his name. Richard loved his work with the students of Quincy Public Schools. He was a proud graduate of North Quincy High School. Next to his two beautiful daughters, this would have been the most meaningful legacy to him. Forever grateful, Anne Caneely Ryan.
Thank you. Okay. On a motion, Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mr. Begoli, we go into executive session for a Level III grievance. We will not be returning. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.